Okay, I have 6:30 on my cell phone clock. Let's call our meeting to order and we'll start with the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect our neighbors, residents, and we remember in prayer our military and first responders who protect and serve at home and abroad. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that's okay. That cleaning company, I can say, we need to realize. Okay, so that brings us to item three, public comments.
We have several people that signed up with she that they're in attendance, but no one wants to speak to the councils.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Do you capture someone for a second?
Yes, normally there's a council report check and a payment report and a check report on the consent agenda, and it's not on the agenda at all for this month, so just wondering why.
We are in transition to our new accountants right now, and since our current finance person has not been available, the report isn't generated, so we'll have both reports next month.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be more up to date. She said anything after the 12, she can give us, so hopefully, we won't be two months behind every time. She said by the 12, she can deliver.
Well, she'll deliver it so that we can make sure that we have it in time for the regular meeting each month. We still will run in arrears, you realize that. I mean, this isn't on the agenda, so we probably need to wait and talk about it in depth at another point, but next month, we'll get both, and it should be in the new format that we've been talking about. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. Under new business, consider and take action on resolution 2024-04. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas, authorizing adoption of the 2024 Fort Bend County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan Update. This is a project that's been ongoing about eight months. Fort Bend County, for the first time, is doing a hazard plan and including each jurisdiction. So jurisdictions have already worked on this, submitted their plans to the county, and so it's a consolidated plan with all of the jurisdictions and the county areas included. So this is a matter of us authorizing adopting the plan. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to ask what this encompasses. It says the county and its jurisdictions have prepared a multi-hazard mitigation, but there's no follow-up documentation. What is the multi-hazard mitigation plan?
So each jurisdiction and the county, because there's lots of unincorporated areas, each one has had to work with the city engineers or whatever their flood mitigation personnel are, fill out questions, make sure that you have a communication plan, say, what are your action plans? It includes actually emergency and mitigation, and that follows up to the county. So there's county plan, and it'll be published once it's adopted, and then we will link to the county plan, to the county document.
Okay, well, this county plan affected my flood insurance by a significant dollar, even though I'm grandfathered in, personally speaking. That being said, without knowledge of what that hazard mitigation action plan updates are, or what they allow for, how do we just pass something that we don't have information?
You certainly don't have to.
I'm questioning what you said.
It basically says that Simonton's plan, Folscher's plan, each jurisdiction's plan is now also included in the county's plan. So not that they made huge changes to what they intend to do, but that it is consolidated, so everyone is working together.
Is that what that is?
Mm-hmm.
It's just, well, it's not the whole saying it's just Simonton's.
This is the art portion that we submitted that now is included in the county-wide plan. So previously, the county had a plan, Simonton had a plan, Folscher had a plan, everybody had their own thing, and we are coordinating with emergency management, but there wasn't ever a document that said, for Fort Bend County, here is all encompassing everything that's included, or how things will be managed. We don't affect, we don't affect with our Simonton plan anything related to FEMA adopting, is it Atlas 21? Atlas, I think it's Ron Birdy.
22.
Or 22, which is the thing that affected our insurance rates, but this outlines in writing in a bigger comprehensive plan what each jurisdiction is doing, and that they've reviewed it, the county has reviewed it as well. So if we needed to make changes, or we needed to revise something, that's been an ongoing project.
Is this part of our CPAC, out of curiosity?
No.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm just, I'm just looking.
Do we have other discussion or questions about it?
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So how does it affect us, or why are we having to pass?
Because we, every jurisdiction in the county has completed this and included your information in the overall county plan, so the county is requesting or requiring that each jurisdiction adopted the county plan.
In answer to your, further answer to your question, not an answer, but in further answer to your question, basically, Simonton had almost 200 claims as far as flood policies were concerned, and it was equivalent of almost $50 million. So they kind of came back and said, hey, how do we walk backwards, if you will, for lack of better terms, and how do we combat this happening in the future and/or negate our...
Negate the losses.
Yeah, exactly, our losses in the future, and I just know that it readily affected what was to be a grandfathered program into my FEMA program pretty extensively. I'm sure it did others along this board, so I was just curious.
Having no plan would significantly affect.
Well, no, we had the plan, it was just that this, these changes law-wise.
Well, but the county didn't have a comprehensive plan, and that was an identified risk, so that's why they took on the task last year.
No, this, this wasn't based on the comp plan, I was just, so like the enhanced emergency operations, it says here that we're not, which we have.
Depends on the definition of enhanced in the form that they were asking.
It says the last time we did this was in 2014. Operations committee created in 2014, and it was completed.
Right, so we've had a committee since 2014.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
And it was recently updated.
How recent, no, this is 2023.
Yeah.
One date, it says completed, grant money used, no updates necessary.
So how about, since you have information that the council doesn't have, let's make a copy.
Y'all can all look at that.
I want to table this for the next meeting, and then just see if we get it.
Thank you, Janie.
Yes, ma'am. Is it something, Lori, out of curiosity, is it something that is just kind of, I hate to use the terminology rubber stamp, but is it something we kind of have to rubber stamp because of FEMA, or because I know that it directly affected the residents of the city?
The county is requiring, requesting, we could refuse, but they're requesting a resolution to adopt it, to adopt the county plan. So if we don't adopt it, it's, it's still going to be in effect. Our plan is our plan, you just saw a copy of it. We feel confident that we are up to date with our plan.
So it doesn't actually affect FEMA or your flood insurance rates, but what it does affect is your ability to get grants.
Grant money.
So it is something that the county is requiring of jurisdictions if they want to be able to qualify for grant money.
So it is directly relative of the CPAC plan, then?
Not the CPAC, no.
Because that's kind of why we're doing the zoning thing, right? To get...
No, the, what she's talking about, let's say we had another event, a flood event, or it could be anything, that if it's a declared disaster and we haven't done a hazard mitigation plan, then we become ineligible to apply for grant money. If it isn't, so that doesn't really have anything to do with the CPAC project? Or the zoning? This really has to do specifically with...
Emergency funds.
Emergency.
Well, the only reason I know about it is because my FEMA sent me a letter saying, stating that this particular resolution has a lot to do with my insurance going up almost twice what it was, and having been, again, grandfathered in to that whole pricing profile, that was the only reason I kind of even looked at it at all. I didn't even realize it was, I'm not going to lie, I was just like, hey, what does this have to do with it? Because I had read the previous letter, so just out of curiosity. I'm, I'm good with passing it, I just think everybody needs, as far as residents, need to know, like, how it does affect us ultimately, that's my thing. It's kind of where I stand on it, and I'm sure, it looks like the rest of the board wants to see it anyway.
We need them, we need to sign it, we need to pass it.
Yeah, we need to go along with the county.
Thank you, guys.
I would say, you know, that it's...
It doesn't change ours, it just shows that we're in collaboration with the county.
That's right. Maybe I'll give another example. Fort Bend County, so with some of the grants that have happened in the last couple of years, Fort Bend County, for lack of a better word, they went out there and collected the money that there was an allocation that would have been X for Simonton, X for Folscher, X dollars for name the city, whoever was involved. And instead of each of us going out there and applying and potentially getting it, the county claimed that money for everybody, and then we work through the GLO, county, you know, the money is divided, so if we don't have a county plan and the county is requiring it, then the county could say, you can't apply because you don't have a mitigation plan. You also could have that same scenario directly with FEMA. This is county-related, so I'm just saying, the complicated order continues to be complicated. If the county is managing the grant, or if you're doing that directly...
Sounds like we're just using theirs, we're using what they've done.
Instead of participating in the collective plan, instead of being standalone all the time.
Well, I mean, y'all still created the plan that's in there. Each jurisdiction creates their own plan, and it's adopted into Fort Bend County's plan, so what I printed out isn't the entire plan, it's just y'all's jurisdiction, correct? It's just City of Simonton, it won't affect any of the other jurisdictions. So technically, y'all did create your own with the county's acceptance.
What you printed out was printed and accepted in 2014, and hasn't been updated?
No, this is the new one.
2023, we did the mitigation plan in 14.
Right, and we did another one in 23.
Yeah, so the update of 2023 is what's being included.
Does 10 years ago update the current laws?
We did it last year in 2023. So the information from history is included, but this update that you just were looking at was created in 2023.
Okay, well, when you look at it, it says updated most recently in 2014, is what I was asking, so.
I think the first one was probably initially done in 14, and it has since been updated, but they haven't, I can't remember what that first line item was, but you probably didn't expand on it any more than it already was, because it was already in debt, I'd be willing to bet. I mean, I have to do mitigation plans at work all the time, so if there's no change, there's no change, but we still note that today's date, you looked at it and made any kind of revisions, or you didn't, so.
I would just think there's been a lot that happened since 2014.
Well, Simonton actually has really good plans, so then we went through each subsequent event, we've learned something, we've been adding and keeping our own plan, and so then in 2023, LJA helped us participate in this collection of data for the county in their format, so that we have the latest and greatest of what we know, what they're asking for, there's lots of, it took months of work from Shanna and Craig's team to help us on that side, along with our input. So Janie will copy that and provide our section?
I'm waiting for Janie to come in, but I do make a motion that we accept it.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, and once the, once the county has adopted the larger document, like I said, we will make sure that it's linked on our website.
So they haven't adopted theirs yet?
Well, all the jurisdictions have to send back theirs, their resolutions, and then they will do, they will provide the final comprehensive documents. Okay, item B, under new business, consider and approve CAD exemptions to be factored into next year's fiscal taxation budgeting process. We're proposing no changes. Right now, we have exemptions for homestead, age 65, or disabled, or disabled veterans. They ask us every year if we want to make changes, we haven't discussed any, so I believe our answer is to stay with what we have. All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, that we keep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item C, consider and take action on Ecode 360 project, except the Olson and Olson recommendations and authorized release of the project to Ecode. So the document that I emailed you all that lists the questions came from Philip, he's going to give you a little bit more update, but basically, all of those items have now been addressed. Are there any particular ones that you wanted to speak about?
No, so as shown on this, if y'all have this piece, very Ecode, do a review, questions, update. I have updated the Sept system, mobile parks, and uses of ride away by providers of telecommunications services as well. The last question, 30 dash, or TAC 002, needed no updates. All the updates have been uploaded into Ecode, so they're still visible, I uploaded them as separate and distinct documents. I did, if there were specific questions, I can speak to some of them. However, what was revised, didn't have any process changes or changes in powers by council or anything along those lines, as discussed in the other meetings, it was all based on updating, updated code language, updated definitions, maybe, maybe some processes, but just getting the language correct with ETJs and things like that because of new laws that have occurred since 2020, whenever, that, you know, between publishing our code and then publishing the PUPS's code updates and things like that. So I'm available, or obviously, if there's any specific questions about anything that came up, the requirement to have something around a pool is in a multifamily housing, just FYI. I looked that up specifically, the fence around the pool, yeah, had to do with multifamily housing, so.
Great, thank you. Did anyone have questions for Philip about any of the specific items? Okay.
And these will come back as ordinances from Ecode for the council to pass, so that's the next step in the process. So this isn't like, biffety-boppety, this is done, right? We want to go through the process, they'll be published and available for passing, but we just noted the changes, and Ecode will produce those ordinances for y'all review for approval.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Is that you or can...
It's me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Just for everybody's knowledge, we have completed our side of the 75-question project, and we are early, it was due on March 11th, so we will submit that back to Ecode, keep us on track. Item D, this is for discussion, consider and take action for the mayor obtain professional recruitment services for the positions of city administrator and city secretary. So as you know, we have continuously advertised for these positions for the city, we renewed the links on our city webpage, since we've talked about this in the last week, we have put it out on our social media, I noticed that some of y'all were forwarding it and sharing it, I appreciate that. You got a good example tonight about finance is not done, there are just not enough people here to juggle all of the things, so I have not done any, made any contact with recruiters, but I would like to get into council's thoughts on considering a recruiting avenue to help us find the best candidates and get them presented moving forward. Thoughts, willingness, it'll cost money, of course, we'll have to share with council what that might look like, but...
Who's professional recruitment services?
It's just a category, it's not a company.
Oh, I didn't know, I thought it was a company, sorry. Did you have anybody in mind?
No, we are part of a by-board, so my thought is to go first to the by-board and find out what, who's already a member and approved there, because they would be accustomed with working municipalities, but I have not done that yet, because I honestly have not invested the time in that avenue until we spoke to the council about it.
Is that, is that not the same thing as TML?
Just a... TML just provides a service where you can post jobs, and I can, if I would like a job, I can go there and look, so it's like a job posting board.
But like, if you're governmental certified and things along those lines, that's where you would go to search for those positions, correct?
Or anybody could, any, any member of society could go for that, they just don't provide the service to find the applicants, go through them, and make sure they match the requirements you're looking for.
They don't have a monetary incentive to find somebody for us.
Right, that's right.
Improvement company does.
Okay, well, if council is open to obtaining professional services...
I'll make the motion.
I made the motion.
All right.
I thought you heard me. No, I don't, I thought Lori heard me. Sorry.
Can we get an idea of how much that's going to run us? This is because I feel like we've spent a whole lot of money already, this particular budget year, and I, I mean, I get it, we have a certain amount, but in the same aspect, if this is going to cost us, you know, $8,000, $9,000, $10,000, $10,000 on top of hiring someone else with the possibility, is there any way to just get a better idea of how much money we're talking here?
Here's a suggestion, just a suggestion, you can do whatever you want, obviously, y'all are the council, but maybe we authorize an amount up to X, like, you're comfortable with $1,000, $3,000, $50,000, whatever that number is, and if it's any greater than that, then it needs to come back as a separate. Thank you, ma'am.
We've done this at church, and it's about $20,000 to $25,000. It is what it is.
Okay, well...
You may find out something different.
If it's $25,000, we won't do it.
If it's $25,000, we don't have it.
That's what it costs us.
We don't have it. I mean, we might, we might have it, but I'm sure taxpayers aren't going to appreciate that.
So it could cost, it could cost us. I guess you have to ask and find, it's a percentage of what they make, it's that kind of thing.
Right, that's right.
Maybe it's different for, you know, government employees.
Would we continue?
I think we need to look at it.
Would we continue? Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem staying with the free and keeping those updated, and I don't mind to continue to do the search, I mean, that's, you're counting on me to do it, I'm happy to do it, but we need to get some really solid great people in training and transitioning and...
I'd tell me go up to a certain amount, and then, I mean, that's just me, but in the same aspect, I mean, consider with our TML, and then have, like, maybe the council can have a look at those particular applications that are coming in or not coming in, I know you said you got like several 30-page applicants, but in the same aspect, I mean, we didn't, in the course of the last few months, we didn't, I didn't personally, I don't know, whatever, I won't speak for anybody else, but I didn't personally see but one resonate, and that, that's, it's kind of one of those things, if we can just kind of keep our eyes on the focus, and we've, we've spent a lot of money, a lot of, a lot of our budgeted money has been spent, and it's only February, so I just kind of want to keep that in mind, as well as get the right people in place, and maybe we could pick a firm that is specialized in the governmental sector kind of thing, that, that might have, you know, might have some more numbers for us and all that good stuff, and so just sort of saying, you know, go find, I don't know.
I think we're really improving her to go look, to see, to find one, before that candidate gets approved or whatever, the whole cost roll up, everything, we'll see all of that before it gets approved, so this is really just, but unless I'm misunderstanding.
Absolutely, I agree with that. And you don't, I mean, you don't have to approve any money, mainly, I don't want, I cannot afford to invest time researching in those companies if council doesn't have an interest in using that, mainly is what we're asking, what I'm asking is to do.
At least talk to them, I think we should.
Okay, great, so we have consensus?
Yes.
Really the word, okay. Thank you.
No, I would say, the mayor to obtain professional recruitment services, we don't know who that person is, that's my only...
No, I'm saying, the council is giving a consensus for me to start looking into that option.
Looking for a company?
You don't pay them unless you hire somebody, unless you hire other candidates.
I got you, I know, I'm not doing much for them, so just question.
Right, that's right, they're not working for BRI.
Yeah, they ain't working for BRI.
All right, thank you. Under reports, my first item, personnel recruitment update, we basically have just talked about it, we've got one additional application since we've refreshed our information last week, and not probably going to be the candidate for us, but we got one, so that was good. Please, please share, Abby has created us a really good post, and if you guys have social, or you have friends or family that are on social, if you have them, help them, help us share it, that would really be great, help us have a wider reach. Item B, the slated candidates for the City of Simonton mayor and two at-large council positions is in your book, I think I emailed that to everybody last Friday, but so that everybody's aware, for the mayor, it's unopposed at Laurie Boudreau, and then city council for two positions, we have three candidates, Justin Boudreau, Kelly Matula, and Daniel Our, Janie, please remind me, I didn't write it in my book, the last day to withdraw?
It's Friday at 5:00.
Next Friday?
It's Friday.
At 5:00?
The 23rd.
So after the 23rd, we will mail our payment for the election to Fort Bend County elections. We've actually already written it, we'll just hold it until Friday.
Another question, what is that part of early voting start? The rest of early voting started today, so...
That's for primary?
Yeah.
And so ours won't start until April?
Okay.
I don't know the dates of primary, I don't want to say the wrong ones, but...
The end date is April 21st.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Final date is May 4th.
The question was, what is early voting?
When does early voting start on the...
It's Monday, April 22nd to Tuesday, April 30th.
Thank you. Thank you.
And those are early voting by personal appearance.
Thank you. And it's at your high school. Item D, the ARPA project update. Shanna, did you have anything you wanted to fill over specifically about that?
No.
I mentioned earlier that we've had a lot of contractors here looking, so.
So we did send out an email, by the way, that they can't just show up. We just wanted to schedule it so that, you know, y'all aren't startled by that. And then, of course, I guess you didn't put it on here, that we pushed it or whatever, just to allow, you know, because there's a couple of contractors that we know are competitive bidders, and so we just wanted to allow them to have a little bit more time so that we get, you know, the best bid that we can get.
So the open date is moved to the 28th, that's next, is that right? That's Wednesday, the 28th?
Yeah.
At 10:00 a.m.?
And that can be found at LJA, City of Simonton?
The bid package, you mean?
The bid package, yes.
It's on Sidcast.
Sidcast?
Sidcast, S-I-V-C-A-S-T.
Awesome. Dot com, dot org, dot?
Com?
Okay, all good, all good, I'm sure we'll find it.
I'm sure I can find it, right?
If you just search Simonton, it'll, it's the only one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
At LJA's recommendation, we pushed it a week, just, I know that's what she was just telling you, but in order to get as many quality bidders as we can, we just opened that window, and it'll give the folks that were already working on it another week to polish their bid. Item E, the Fund You 5% Increase. That is the email I sent to council after our last meeting. The rate increase is $342.97 for the next fiscal year. We got a, I notified you that it was a 5% increase, but I can have the dollar amount just so that you're aware, it's $342.97. So in March, our next regular meeting is the 19th. We will not meet the first week because voting will be going on. And with that, we can adjourn at 7:02. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you all for coming.